Hello friends, welcome to T1 Academy, I am Sudhikumar. Friends, we are happy to announce about our website t1academy.co. This T1academy.co website has M&amp;M's provided. This website has M&amp;M's, my specialty is this. Let us see more detail. How to register, how to attempt MCQs and all the content on our website. So first of all, I will open Google. So here, search T1academy.co. So here I will search home page. So I click on home page. Here I will see the website. So this is the most important T1 Academy related website. Okay? So in this, we have provided all the exam related content. Also, resources, current affairs, current affairs related MCQs, video lectures, quick revision materials. We have easily provided home page. And one more thing about us. My concern is what is it and what is the academic related? We have provided M&amp;M's. So here we have latest blogs and news. And what is current affairs? And tell us about it. We have easily access to it. And home page. And testimonials and feedbacks. So this is about home page. Mainly this is related to home page. So mainly now we are announcing what is it? APPSI aspirants who are coming, Group 2 mains are coming. Sir, I provide test series for you. So we have already run this background. My content developers have studied and prepared content. So immediately, APPSI Group 2 aspirants need help. We have created a tool. So if you log in to home page. What is it? APPSI Group 2 related, MCQs related, all subjects are there. So here we have MCQs related subjects. So test series is there. Most important test. Now we have Paper 1, Paper 2 and 2. Paper 1, Paper 2 and Club. We have a subject. Chapter by MCQs. So this is the aim. So we have provided this. So party, science and technology, AP history, Indian economy, AP economy, environment related. Here direct access is there.
Hello friends, welcome to T1 Academy. As part of this session, we will be dealing with some of the practice questions on the planning system and the Niti Ayog. This topic would be very important for the upcoming APPSI Group 2 mains examination. And also it is one of the important topic for the many of the other examinations like UPSC, the APPSI Group 1 and the TGPSI Group 1 and also the Group 2, APPSI Group 2 and the TGPSI Group 2. And also for other examinations that are conducted by both the central government and the state governments. Okay? So let us start our discussion on the planning commission. The first question, consider the following statement with reference to Niti Ayog. Consider the following statement with reference to Niti Ayog. The first statement is governing council of the Niti Ayog comprises of the governor of all states and the left-hand governors of the union territory. This statement is wrong. Why? There is no representation of the governors in the governing council of the Niti Ayog. In governing council, there is no governor representation. Okay? And this first statement is wrong. Second statement, regional council comprises of the chief ministers of states. Yes? And also union territories with legislature. Yes? And left-hand governors of all other unit territories in the region. Yes? This statement is correct. Statement 2 is correct. Next, one of its objectives is to develop mechanism to formulate credible plans. Yes? Obviously. Niti Ayog, okay? Planning commission replace Niti Ayog. Credible plans at the village level or at the block level framed. Clear? So this statement is also correct. Next, chief executive officer, chief executive officer of Niti Ayog is appointed by the president. No, this statement is wrong. The chief executive officer of Niti Ayog is appointed by the prime minister. He is appointed by the prime minister. Okay? So statement 2 and 3 are correct. Okay? So the option is only 2. The option is only 2. Now we have to think about it. If we have done a question, then we will overlook it generally. We should look at the correct answer. Whether the question is asked not correct or correct. Incorrect or correct. You should take care of it. Otherwise, what is it? Some people are incorrect. I will overlook it. Option is wrong. Click next. So let us see the explanation related to it. Okay? Option B is the correct answer. Statement 1 is incorrect. Why is statement 1 is incorrect? Why? Because we have a governor representation in the governing council. Okay? There is no representation of governor in the governing council. Next, we have the chairman as the prime minister. We have the vice chairman to be appointed by the prime minister. And also we have the governing council comprising the chief ministers of all the states, chief ministers of the union territories with legislature and the left-hand governors of all the union territories. Okay? So there is no representation of the governor in the governing council. Next, regional council. Regional council comprises of the chief minister, the left-hand governor of union territories and the chief ministers of union territories with legislature. Chief ministers of union territories with legislature. Clear? And the statement 4. One of the CEO, the CEO of Niti Ayog is appointed by the prime minister and not the president. Clear? Next. With reference to the local level planning in India, consider the following statements. It was brought to practice for the first time only after the Constitutional Amendment Act of 1992. No. We have local self-governments like local institutions, local governance institutions. For the first time, 73rd Constitutional Amendment Act. Okay? We have independence. We have immediately got independence. We have local self-governance. One, we have community development program. Okay? This was introduced in 1952. Okay? Through community development program, we have introduced the concept of local governance in India. Clear? So first statement is wrong. Next, the constitution provides for the establishment of district planning committees to consolidate the plans prepared by the panchayats and the municipalities. Yes? Under Article 243 ZD. Under Article 243 ZD, we have district planning committees. Okay? So this statement is correct. Next, the community program began in recommendation of committee Development India and the Ashok Mahata Committee. Okay? The community development program began on the recommendations of committee Development India on the Ashok Mahata Committee. This is also wrong. Why? Because we have introduced the community development program in 1952. Okay? Community development program which aims to develop the community as a whole was introduced in the year 1952. Whereas we have Ashok Mahata Committee in 1977. Okay? To strengthen the panchayat raj institutions. To form the panchayat raj institutions in 1977. So the answer is, so statement 2 is correct. So answer is only 1. Next. Clear? So this is the explanation. The local level planning started soon after the independence. We have got independence. Immediately we have local self-governance. Through community development program. This is the reason. 1952. Okay? Next, Article 243 ZD. We have formed the district planning committee. Okay? The main aim of the district planning committee is to consolidate the plans at the district level. Okay? So this statement is of course correct. Next, as we have studied, statement 3 is incorrect because community development program we have in the year 1952. Okay? Whereas Ashok Mahata Committee was formed in the year 1977. The main aim of the Ashok Mahata Committee is to strengthen the panchayat raj institutions. Okay? At this point of time, the relevance or the institution of panchayat raj institution is being weakened. So we have formed the Ashok Mahata Committee in the year 1977. Clear? Click next. Consider the following statements regard indicative planning. Indicative planning, it recognizes consumer sovereignty and producer's freedom. It recognizes consumer sovereignty and producer's freedom while achieving the targets. While achieving the targets. Yes? The indicative planning tried to balance between the government and the private players. Okay? The government and the private sector. Click next. In indicative planning, the state plays a marginal role. Yes? In indicative planning, state is a regulator, promoter. There is a balance. For example, in India, mixed economy. Mixed economy is one of the example of the indicative planning. Mixed economy is one of the very good example of the indicative planning. Next, third fire plan in India denotes India's transition towards indicative planning. No, it is not the third fire plan. It is the eighth fire plan. See, eighth fire plan is the economic reforms of 1991. Okay? 1991 economic reforms, you know, we have come up with this concept called as liberalization, privatization and globalization. Now privatization is one of the very important part of these particular economic reforms. Okay? So privatization through, we have indicated Indian planning system. Imperative planning, indicative planning, transition phase. Okay? So that way, that way, it is the eighth, it is the eighth fire plan that led to the transition of the Indian planning system to indicative planning. Clear? So here only the option is, the option 1 is correct, option 2 is correct. Okay? Option 3 is not correct. So answer is only 2. Only 2 options are correct. Next. Indicative planning or planning by inducement is found in capitalist countries. Why capitalist countries? In capitalist countries, the private players or the private institutions, they play dominant role. Okay? They play a dominant role where the government is the regulator and the promoter. Regulator and promoter. Okay? So that is why the statement 1 is correct. The essence of indicative planning is that it recognize not only consumer sovereignty but also the producer's freedom. Producer's freedom. Okay? The private players or the private manufacturers, they are given the freedom by the government. Okay? So statement 2 is correct. Okay? Statement 3. India's eighth plan mentioned that planning would have to be reoriented as to make it indicative. Why? At this point of time, we have given the concept of privatization. 1991 economic crisis, LPG reforms. Indian economic system is imperative, indicative transition phase. Okay? So that is the reason statement 3 is incorrect. Click next. Consider the following statements regarding the Niti Ayog. The Niti Ayog does not have the power, does not have the power to allocate funds unlike the planning commission. Now we have to understand what is it. Niti Ayog is a think tank. A think tank. Research policy. Okay? It is like the think tank or it is involved in the policy research. Okay? It is not, it is not an institution that gives certain goals or promotes, tries to implement certain goals. Okay? So a think tank or a policy researcher. What is happening? Government has certain advisors. Government has certain recommendations. What do you do? Otherwise, what do you say? Policy related, what is good? I have established Niti Ayog. Okay? So unlike planning commission, Niti Ayog is not allocated with any kind of funds. Okay? Next. The states have representation in the Niti Ayog unlike the planning commission. This statement is correct. This statement is correct. Why? In planning commission, states' representation is there. Whereas in Niti Ayog, we have governing council, regional council. States are represented. Okay? There is a representation of the states as far as the, what do you say? The Niti Ayog is concerned in the form of the governing council and the regional council. As part of the governing council, we have the representation of the chief ministers of all the states. We have the representation of the chief ministers of union territories with legislatures. Left-hand governors' representation is there. All unit territories, left-hand governors' representation is there. Okay? So answer is both 1 and 2. Both 1 and 2. See, we have to think about it. We have Group 2 APSC. Or Group 2 TGPSC. This is the same state service exams. This is the fact question. Now questions are more or less conceptual. Okay? Conceptual questions. Just facts, we have to remember. We have to remember that we have to clear exam. Okay? We have to focus on concepts. Okay? Next. Clear? So the planning commission could allot funds to union ministries and state governments whereas the Niti Ayog mainly works as the think tank. It offers, it works as the think tank. Okay? So knowledge assistance is there. Niti Ayog is there. A knowledge assistance is the government of India. Government of India and to state governments also. Click next. The Niti Ayog as a governing council comprising the chief ministers of all the states. Okay? As I have told you. And the left-hand governors of union territories. Okay? And this in the form of the governing council. In the form of the governing council. Okay? Whereas the composition of the planning commission had no representation from the states. It has no representation from the states. Okay? The planning for the states is given without representation of the states in the planning commission. Okay? States' planning, or states' funds, are given by the planning commission. In planning commission, there is no states' representation. Click next. Consider the following statement with respect to the new economic policy of 1991. Okay? In 1991, the government decided to abandon the licensing system in many sectors, allowed interested individuals to start their own industrial activity. This statement is hundred percent correct. Why? 1991 economic crisis. This is the reason. We have given the reforms. Liberalization, privatization and globalization reforms. So these reforms. The doors of India's economy is open to the world. Now any country, any situation, India, Bharat Deshan. Okay? So that way, whoever is in Bharat Deshan, or any country, India, starts its own company. Okay? This is the reason. Many sectors only allow foreign investments. And there are a lot of restrictions. License system is complex. Licensing, a private agency, it is difficult. Okay? But after 1991 economic reforms, the system of license was done away with and the system of licensing was relaxed. A lot of licenses. Clear? So statement 1 is correct. Next, the government decided to allow and encourage the entry of private sector in certain areas earlier reserved for public sector only. This is also correct. For example, 1991, a lot of sectors like insurance sectors, banking sectors etc. There, private investments, private participation is allowed. Okay? It was completely regulated by the government. Completely owned by the government. Okay? But after 1991 economic reforms, we started liberalizing and we started allowing the private investments into those sectors which were previously reserved for only government. Okay? So statement 2 is correct. Next. Direct tax rates were rationalized with a three-slap structure during the economic reforms. This statement is also correct. Why? Because we have a direct tax system in India, it is important. Direct tax. Okay? So direct tax system, why is it important? If we give direct tax, we have 40%, 50%. Chances of tax evasion are there. Okay? Chances of tax evasion are there. Okay? If I have a 20 lakhs or 30 lakhs. There, I have 40 or 50 lakhs. I have taxed the government tax. I have done this. My income is 30 lakhs or 40 lakhs. I have 17 lakhs or 15 lakhs. I have taxed it. Okay? That is tax evasion. Tax evasion is nothing but not disclosing your income completely to the government to avoid the payment of the tax. To avoid the payment of the tax is what is called as a tax evasion. So we have done this in 1991. This direct tax system was rationalized. Okay? The highest or the peak tax level was 30% by the year 1997. 1997 year. I have taxed 30%. Okay? So that a business man, a person, taxes. That way, government generates revenue. Clear? So this statement is correct. Next. The rupee was revalued against foreign currency. The rupee was revalued against foreign currency. It is not revalued but it is devalued. It is devalued. Indian currency, government of India devalued. Exchange rate, when we compare the rupee with the dollar or other, what do you say? Very prominent international currencies, the Indian rupee was devalued. It is devalued. Clear? So the answer is not revalued but it is devalued. Clear? So the answer is only 3. Only 3. Clear? Next. The important feature of liberalization is to do away with the licensing system. Licensing system is relaxed. Licensing system is completed. Next. Privatization implies opening of the door of industrial activities to the private sector which was exclusively reserved for the public sector. Certain sectors which are exclusively or which were reserved only for the public sector have been open to the participation of the private entrepreneurs. Next. Direct tax rates were rationalized. We have decreased the, what do you say? The percentage of the direct taxes that are imposed on the companies and the individuals and the peak, highest direct tax at this point of time was 30%. Clear? Next. The first, statement 4. The first important reform in the external sector was made in the foreign exchange market. Okay? Where the currency was devalued against the dollar. It was devalued. In the exchange system, we have devalued it. Clear? So option C is correct. Clear? Next. Which of the following were the key features of the Mahalnobi's model? Which of the following were the key features of the Mahalnobi's model? Rapid industrialization with a focus on heavy industries and capital goods. Rapid industrialization with a focus on the heavy industries and capital goods. Yes? Mahalnobi's plan. We have done this. This is second fire plan. Second fire plan. Next. Launch of price wage policy to check the minance of inflation on the wage earners. This statement is wrong. This statement is wrong. At this point of time, we have inflation. But the reason for inflation is not the, what do you say? The minance of the things happened with respect to the wage earners. What is happening? In second fire plan, agricultural investments are taken. Agricultural investments are taken. Agricultural shortage is there. We have agricultural shortage or the shortage with respect to food grains. Okay? So that led to the increase in the prices of the goods and that is the reason because of which we have the inflation at this point of time. The inflation at this point of time is not with respect to the wage earners or wage workers. Okay? Next. Focus on poverty reduction through integrated rural development program. No. This statement is also not correct. Okay? Yes, the ultimate aim of the integrated rural development program is to reduce the poverty in the rural areas to improve the, what do you say? The standards of living in the rural areas. But that was not done. Okay? As part of second year, second fire plan, this was not done as part of the IRDP. So answer is only 1. Answer is only 1. So the second fire plan was to set India on the path of industrialization. Was moving spirit behind the second fire plan. Okay? Next. For the second fire plan, the period was 56 to 61. Okay? It is in the year 1956. We have the first industrial policy. First industrial policy. Okay? The first industrial policy marks the, what do you say? The start of the rapid industrialization or the heavy industries in India. Clear? The strategy of the growth laid emphasis on rapid industrialization with a focus on the heavy industrialization and capital goods. As I have said you earlier. The plan was developed by Professor Mahalnobi. Statement 2 is incorrect. As I have told you. Why? Why? Because the inflation at this point of time was because of the food shortages and drought. Okay? Agricultural shortage, agriculture sector, investments are taken. We have inflation. The inflation is not because of the, what do you say? The wage workers or the wage earners. Okay? So statement 2 is incorrect. Next. Statement 3. The sixth fire plan was launched with the slogan of Garibi Hattaw. Okay? The sixth fire plan was launched with the slogan of Garibi Hattaw. It is not the second fire plan. Okay? The plan gave emphasis on socio-economic infrastructure in the rural areas eliminating the rural poverty. Okay? And all these things, all these things that happened as part of the sixth fire plan was part of IRDP. Integrated Rural Development Program. Okay? The steps that are taken as part of the second fire plan, okay? Is not through IRDP. Is not through Integrated Rural Development Program. This plan was formulated and published by Jai Prakash Narayan. This is the first point that you need to remember. Okay? It drew inspiration from community workers and trustees. The second point that you need to remember. It emphasized on agriculture, agriculture-based small and cottage industries. The third point. Okay? Self-reliance and decentralized participation form of economic growth. The above paragraph describes which of the following plans of economic development. The answer is the Sarvodaya Plan. The Sarvodaya Plan introduced by or formulated by Jai Prakash Narayan. Jai Prakash Narayan. Okay? We have the plan that was, what do you say? Drawn inspiration from the Gandhian concept of the community workers and trustees. And we have also a plan that was drawn inspiration from the Vinoba Bhavay ideology. Vinoba Bhavay ideology. And that plan is the Sarvodaya Plan that was formulated by the Jai Prakash Narayan. Okay? Jai Prakash Narayan drafted Sarvodaya Plan. It is inspired by Gandhian thought of community workers and trustees and also the land reforms brought by the Vinoba Bhavay. The land reforms that were brought in by the Vinoba Bhavay. Clear? But Bombay Plan. Bombay Plan, it was formulated by JRD Tata. Okay? The Birlas. Okay? John Methai. And there are other people. There are other people who formulated the Bombay Plan. Now the Bombay Plan emphasizes on the investments on industries, investments on investments in heavy industries. Investments in heavy industries and they want the rapid industrialization to be promoted. Okay? And also they want the public investments. They want the public investments in the, what do you say? The industries. Clear? So that is what is Bombay Plan. Okay? The Gandhian Plan. The Gandhian Plan was drafted by Shri Man Narayan. Shri Man Narayan Agarwal. Okay? And it was completely based on the Gandhian ideology. It was completely based on the Gandhian ideology of the governance. Okay? Next, we have the People's Plan. People's Plan was drafted by MN Roy. MN Roy. Okay? And he was the person, he was the communist leader who emphasized on the removal of capitalism. Capitalism is a concept. Okay? Community ownership of resources is there. Okay? So these are the things that are part of the People's Plan drafted by MN Roy. Clear? So the answer is Sarvodaya Plan. All these terms. Okay? The community workers and trustees, what do you say? The Gandhian ideology of community workers and trustees, the small and cottage industries, self-reliance and decentralized participatory form etc. Are dealt part of the Sarvodaya Plan. Clear? Next. So option C is the correct answer. Okay? It drew major inspirations from the Gandhian techniques of constructive works by the community and trustees as well as the Sarvodaya concept of Acharya Vinoba Bhavay. Clear? Next. It emphasized on agriculture, agriculture-based small and cottage industries, self-reliance and almost no dependence on the foreign capital. Self-reliance is the one of the important and the fundamental concept of Sarvodaya Plan. Okay? We have to do whatever countries, or whatever situation, we have to do. Okay? We have to do whatever. छना ऑस्ट्रेन लेदु ओके मन अवसर आलकु अह कावाल छन अंता मनो उत्पत्ति जैसको अली अनी जप्पे दे सर्वोदया प्लान क्लियर नेक्स्ट कंसीडर डी फॉलोइंग स्टेटमेंट्स इन कंटेक्स्ट ऑफ़ डी फाइनेंस कमिशन एंड डी प्लानिंग कमिशन फाइनेंस कमिशन एंड डी प्लानिंग कमिशन डी मेंबर्स ऑफ़ बोथ डी कमिशंस आर अपॉइंटेड बाय डी प्रेसिडेंट रॉन्ग इन दुकूं अंते यस डी मेंबर्स ऑफ़ डी फाइनेंस कमिशन आर अपॉइंटेड बाय डी प्रेसिडेंट अंडर आर्टिकल 280 ऑफ़ डी इंडियन कांस्टिट्यूशन आर्टिकल 280 ऑफ़ डी इंडियन कांस्टिट्यूशन डील्स विद डी व्हाट यू से डी कांस्टिट्यूशन ऑफ़ डी फाइनेंस कमिशन बाय डी प्रेसिडेंट ओके ऑल डी मेंबर्स ऑफ़ डी फाइनेंस कमिशन आर अपॉइंटेड बाय डी प्रेसिडेंट वंस इन फाइव इयर्स ओके सो यह डी ऑप्शन इस बी रॉन्ग बिकॉज़ डी मेंबर्स ऑफ़ डी प्लानिंग कमिशन आर नॉट अपॉइंटेड बाय डी अह व्हाट यू से डी अह प्रेसिडेंट दे आर अपॉइंटेड बाय डी प्राइम मिनिस्टर ओके नेक्स्ट डी रिकमेंडेशंस ऑफ़ डी बोथ डी कमिशंस आर एडवाइजरी इन नेचर यस डी रिकमेंडेशंस मेड बाय डी फाइनेंस कमिशन एंड डी रिकमेंडेशंस मेड बाय डी प्लानिंग कमिशन आर बोथ एडवाइजरी इन नेचर डी रिकमेंडेशंस मेड बाय बोथ दिस कमिशंस आर नॉट बाइंडिंग ऑन डी गवर्नमेंट गवर्नमेंट कच्चितंग वाटिनी अमलू परछाली अनी रूल आइटी एकड़ा लेदु आंसर इस ओनली तू ओनली तू डी रिकमेंडेशंस ऑफ़ बोथ डी कमिशंस आर एडवाइजरी इन नेचर सो डी फाइनेंस कमिशन कंसिस्ट ऑफ़ चेयरमैन एंड फोर अदर मेंबर्स तू बी अपॉइंटेड बाय डी प्रेसिडेंट ओके दिस इस आस पार्ट ऑफ़ आर्टिकल 280 ऑफ़ डी इंडियन कांस्टिट्यूशन ओके नेक्स्ट विथ रिस्पेक्ट तू डी प्लानिंग कमिशन डी प्राइम मिनिस्टर वाज डी चेयरमैन ऑफ़ डी कमिशन डी अदर मेंबर्स वे अपॉइंटेड बाय डी सेंट्रल कैबिनेट ओके दे आर अपॉइंटेड बाय डी सेंट्रल कैबिनेट ओके फ्यू मेंबर्स आर अपॉइंटेड बाय डी प्राइम मिनिस्टर क्लियर नेक्स्ट डी रिकमेंडेशंस मेड बाय डी फाइनेंस कमिशन एंड डी प्लानिंग कमिशन आर ओनली ऑफ़ एडवाइजरी इन नेचर ओनली ऑफ़ एडवाइजरी इन नेचर डी गवर्नमेंट नीड नॉट इंप्लीमेंट और डी गवर्नमेंट नीड नॉट व्हाट यू से कंसीडर डी रिकमेंडेशंस मेड बाय दिस अह बोथ डी कमिशंस क्लियर सो स्टेटमेंट तू इस करेक्ट नेक्स्ट कंसीडर डी फॉलोइंग स्टेटमेंट इन कंटेक्स्ट ऑफ़ प्लानिंग इन इंडिया इन कंटेक्स्ट ऑफ़ प्लानिंग इन इंडिया डी 74th कांस्टिट्यूशनल अमेंडमेंट एक्ट ऑफ़ 1992 हैव मेड स्पेसिफिक प्रोविजंस फॉर सेटिंग अप ऑफ़ डिस्ट्रिक्ट प्लानिंग कमिटीज डिस्ट्रिक्ट प्लानिंग कमिटीज यस इंदा कमन चप्पु कुन्नत आर्टिकल 243 ZD आर्टिकल 243 ZD द्वारा मनो डिस्ट्रिक्ट प्लानिंग कमिटीज अन्य वी अह एयरपार्ट जैसा हूं ओके सो स्टेटमेंट वन इस करेक्ट नेक्स्ट डी सब्जेक्ट ऑफ़ इकोनॉमिक एंड सोशल प्लानिंग कम्स अंडर डी यूनियन लिस्ट ऑफ़ डी कांस्टिट्यूशन डी सब्जेक्ट ऑफ़ इकोनॉमिक एंड सोशल प्लानिंग कम्स अंडर डी यूनियन लिस्ट ऑफ़ डी कांस्टिट्यूशन दिस स्टेटमेंट इस रॉन्ग व्हाय बिकॉज़ डी सब्जेक्ट ऑफ़ प्लानिंग डी सब्जेक्ट ऑफ़ प्लानिंग बोथ डी इकोनॉमिक एंड सोशल प्लानिंग कम्स अंडर डी कॉनकरंट लिस्ट डी कॉनकरंट लिस्ट ओके डेयर डी पार्लिमेंट एंड डी स्टेट लेजिस्लेचर कैन मेक लॉ कॉनकरंट लिस्ट लो उन्हें गावट्टी पार्लिमेंट आयन गानी लेपोते स्टेट एसेंबलीज लेपोते स्टेट लेजिस्लेचर्स आयन गानी दिन पाइन ओका लॉ चीयो चु ओके सो स्टेटमेंट तू इस रॉन्ग नेक्स्ट डी माइक्रो लेवल प्लानिंग इस प्राइमरली बेस्ड ऑन डी लोकल प्रॉयर्टीज डी माइक्रो लेवल प्लानिंग इस प्राइमरली बेस्ड ऑन डी लोकल प्रॉयर्टीज सो स्टेटमेंट थ्री इस अलसो करेक्ट आंसर इस बी ओनली तू क्लियर नेक्स्ट सो डी 74th कांस्टिट्यूशनल अमेंडमेंट एक्ट ऑफ़ 19 आई हैव डी प्रोविजंस फॉर डी डिस्ट्रिक्ट प्लानिंग कमिटीज आज आई हैव टोल्ड यू अर्ली नेक्स्ट डी सब्जेक्ट ऑफ़ इकोनॉमिक एंड सोशल प्लानिंग कम्स अंडर डी कॉनकरंट लिस्ट इट कम्स अंडर डी कॉनकरंट लिस्ट इट डज नॉट कम्स अंडर डी यूनियन लिस्ट इट इस नॉट पार्ट ऑफ़ डी यूनियन लिस्ट ओके सो इट आस इट कम्स अंडर डी कॉनकरंट लिस्ट डी पार्लिमेंट एंड डी स्टेट लेजिस्लेचर हैव डी पॉवर तू मेक लेजिस्लेचर ऑन दिस पर्टिकुलर सब्जेक्ट ओके सो यह डी सब्जेक्ट ऑफ़ कॉनकरंट लिस्ट इस बोर्डर फ्रॉम विच कांस्टिट्यूशन इट इस बोर्डर फ्रॉम डी कांस्टिट्यूशन ऑफ़ ऑस्ट्रेलिया इट इस बोर्डर फ्रॉम डी कांस्टिट्यूशन ऑफ़ ऑस्ट्रेलिया ओके एडिशनल इनफॉरमेशन नेक्स्ट डी माइक्रो लेवल और डिस्ट्रिक्ट लेवल एंड लोकल लेवल प्लांस आर मेनली बेस्ड ऑन लोकल प्रॉयर्टीज एंड नीड्स यस ओके मनो लोकल प्रॉयर्टीज लेकपोते व्हाट यू से अह विलेज लेवल लोगानी लेट ब्लॉक लेवल लोगानी ब्लॉक एंड डिस्ट्रिक्ट लेवल लो ओके अवसर आल एंटी एंड व्हाट आर डी यूनिक व्हाट यू से आस्पिरेशन ऑफ़ डी पीपल आत दिस स्टेट आत दिस लेवल ऑफ़ गवर्नेंस अन्य अर्धन जैस कोनी वी नीड तू फॉर्म ए कंसोलिडेटेड प्लान वी नीड तू फॉर्म ए कंसोलिडेटेड प्लान नेक्स्ट विथ रेफरेंस तू डी नेशनल डेवलपमेंट काउंसिल विथ रेफरेंस तू डी नेशनल डेवलपमेंट काउंसिल विच ऑफ़ डी फॉलोइंग स्टेटमेंट्स आर करेक्ट इट रिकमेंडेशंस वेर नॉट बाइंडिंग ऑन डी प्लानिंग कमिशन यस जस्ट लाइक हो डी रिकमेंडेशंस ऑफ़ प्लानिंग कमिशंस आर नॉट बाइंडिंग ऑन डी गवर्नमेंट डी रिकमेंडेशंस वेर मेड बाय डी नेशनल डेवलपमेंट काउंसिल आर नॉट बाइंडिंग ऑन डी प्लानिंग कमिशन डी ऑप्शन इस यस ड्राफ्ट फायर प्लान्स यूज्ड तू बी प्लेस्ड बिफोर डी नेशनल डेवलपमेंट काउंसिल फॉर इट्स एक्सेप्टेंस यस ड्राफ्ट फायर प्लान अन्य दी एनडीसी मुंद पढ़ता हूं ओके नेक्स्ट गवर्नमेंट ऑफ़ इंडिया आस पास्ड डी रेजोल्यूशन तू अबॉलिश्ड डी एनडीसी एंड ट्रांसफर इट्स पॉवर्स तू डी गवर्निंग काउंसिल ऑफ़ डी नीति आयोग ओके यस डी रेजोल्यूशन इस प्लेस्ड बिफोर डी गवर्नमेंट ऑफ़ इंडिया बट आर रेजोल्यूशन अन्य इनका मन पास जाले दो इकड़ा क्वेश्चन लो इंडिया आस पास्ड डन उन्ही डी गवर्नमेंट ऑफ़ इंडिया आस पास्ड डन उन्ही सो स्टेटमेंट थ्री इस रॉन्ग ओके सो डी आंसर इस ओनली वन एंड तू क्लियर नेक्स्ट ओके सो डी एनडीसी इस एन एडवाइजरी बॉडी तू डी प्लानिंग कमिशन इट इस जस्ट एन एडवाइजरी बॉडी Next, okay, so the NDC is an advisory body to the planning commission, it is just an advisory body. Even the recommendations, NDC aedaita recommendation chesundho, adhi planning commission amalu parachali lekupote consider jayala ne rule ekkada ledu, okay? Next, the draft fire plan prepared by the planning commission was first submitted to the union cabinet, it is first submitted to the union cabinet. Then it was used to be placed before NDC for its acceptance, then the uh then the plan was presented to the parliament. It was presented to the parliament, next. Statement three, in two thousand six, it was reported that the government is also going to abolish NDC and transfer its powers to the governing council of the Neeti Ayog. However, till now no such resolution has been passed, it has no such resolution has been passed, clear? So answer one is correct, option A is correct. Our resolution introduced cheshnagani, government of India mundu pitinagani, our resolution under the inkapassavale, okay? So as a consequence of it not get pa- it not being passed, so statement three is wrong. Next question, consider the following statements with respect to the erstwhile planning commission of India. The first statement, the finance minister was the ex-officio member, he was the ex-officio member of the commission, yes? The finance minister and the planning minister, the finance minister and the planning minister, they are the ex-officio members of the commission, the answer is yes. The deputy chairperson was appointed by the president, no, the deputy chairman was appointed by the cabinet, the union cabinet. So this statement is wrong, okay? Next, the state governments were not represented in the commission, the state governments were not represented in the commission, this, yes. Intamundu manam matlaadukunattu, planning commission lo state governments representation anadi ledu, Neeti Ayog lo undi, okay? Next, the full-time export members had the rank of the minister of state, yes, this guda correct. Endukku anta full-time exports evraite unnaaru planning commission lo, valaki minister of state equivalent rank undi. Okay, ministry of state anta, the he is one of the person, he is one of the council of ministers who is given the independent charge or he will assist the union cabinet mem, okay? He will assist the union cabinet minister, okay? Athaniki independent charge ivachu lekupote, kendra mantri, union cabinet evraite unnaarki, union cabinet lo una mantrini assist jayuchu, okay? So this statement is also correct, so answer is only three, one, three and four, okay? So answer is C, the finance minister and planning minister were the ex-officio members of the commission, they are the ex-officio members of the commission, next. The deputy chairman was appointed by the central cabinet, he was appointed by the central cabinet, he was not appointed by the president, next. The erstwhile planning commission was wholly a center constituted body, the state governments were not represented. There is no representation of the states, there is no representation of the states or the union territories, next. The commission had had four to seven full-time export members who are given the rank of minister of state, okay? They are equivalent to the rank of the minister of states, clear? So that is a thing, next. Consider the following statements, economic decisions are made through market system in imperative planning. Economic decisions are ma- made through market system in imperative planning, this statement is completely wrong. Endukku anta imperative ma- planning lo central control ekku gauntadi, central government control ekku gauntadi imperative planning lo, okay? There is complete control by the government in imperative planning, okay? There is no, what do you say, a control that is given to the private players or player players ki oka free handedness anadi undadu, okay? So this statement is wrong. Indicative planning recognizes consumer sovereignty and producer's freedom, yes. Endukku anta indicative planning anadi, it balance between the government and the private players. Government gives certain powers to the private players or government promotes the private participation as part of the indicative planned planning, okay? Indhaak manam matlaadukunattu, mixed economy, the planning that is drafted uh with the mixed economy as the concept is also one of the very good example of the indicative planning, so answer is only two, only two, clear? Next, so B is the correct answer because in imperative planning there is complete authority of the central planning authority or government, okay? Next, in the indicative planning, there is, what do you say, consumer sovereignty but also the producers freedom also is ensured, okay? So there is balance, there is balance between government and private participation, private players, clear? So that is one of the very important characteristic as part as far as the indicative planning is considered, clear? Next, in the context of Indian economy after independence, consider the following statements. After independence, India adopted a planned and communist economic model, planned and communist economic model. Planned, yes, but communist model, no. We did not adopt communist model, manak communist adopt a model anadi adopt jaskole. The thing that we have adopted is the mixed economy, mixed economy, clear? So communist model lo emaita di ante, private ownership, private ownership over the factors of production anadi undadu. Manakunnu factors of production aedaita undo, land, labor, what do you say, capital, etcetera, evaite unnaayo, daantlo private ownership anadi undadu. There is no private ownership as far as the factors of production is concerned in the communist form of economic model, okay? But whereas in mixed economy, there is private ownership of the factors of production, okay? So statement one is wrong, next. The private sector was given an active and dominant role, no. Even in mixed economy, the active and the dominant role is vested in the hands of the government. Ekku role, dominant role, government chaitlo ne untadi, okay? Government private players ne leto private entrepreneurs ne lepothe private institutions ni regulate jastadi, okay? The private players or the private institution should function within the regulations given by the government, clear? So statement two is also wrong, so answer is neither one nor two, neither one nor two, clear? So answer is D, independent India was declared to be planned and mixed economy. And the state was to be given an active and dominant role, it is the government that, what do you say, have the dominant role or as the upper hand when it compared to, when it comes to the mixed economy, next. With respect to the Sarvodaya plan, which of the following statements is, are correct? Okay, both agricultural and industrial sector were given, were equally highlighted by the plan, no. No, Sarvodaya plan, it emphasized on self reliance, yes, but more emphasis was given self reliance with respect to the agriculture and agricultural based industries. Agricultural and agricultural based industries, ekku importance agriculture marivu agriculture related industrieska matrami ichyamu, okay? So equal importance of agriculture and industrial sector was were given by M R M N Roy's People's Plan, okay? The People's Plan that was drafted by the M N Roy gave equal importance to industries and the agricultural sector. So statement one is wrong, it was inspired by the Sarvodaya concept of Vinoba Bhav, yes, as we have discussed jarle. Intamundu manam matlaadukunattu, mana plan aedaita unda, Sarvodaya plan aedaita unda, Vinoba Bhav Sarvodaya ideology payina tiskocham, yes, statement two is correct. The plan advocated for dependence on foreign capital and technology, no. Manamu self reliance, mukkenga, pradamanga manu self reliance gunichu matlaadukuntu napudu. Foreign capital lekupote, technology meeda manu adhar- adhar padavakashma ledu, adhar padalchana avasram guda ledu. According to the Sarvodaya plan, okay? So answer is only two, statement B is correct, okay? So correct answer is the B, statement one is cor- Sarvodaya plan was in the ambit of the Gandhian plan and in support of agricultural and agric- agricultural based small and the cottage industries, okay? It is the M N Roy People's Plan which gave equal important to agricultural industrial sector, next. The major inspiration was drawn from the Gandhian techniques of trusty ship and the constructive works by the community, okay? Gandhian ideology aedaita unda, trusty ship ideology, okay? Lethe community ideology, dani payina manu i plan anadi tiskocham, next. The plan was in support of self reliance and emphasized almost no dependence on foreign capital. Foreign capital, foreign investments lekupote, foreign technological assistance anadi manaka austran ledu, okay? So that was the concept with respect to the Sarvodaya plan, next. With respect to planning in India, which of the following statements is, are incorrect? Jaratega judali incorrect about Gandhian plan, okay? The plan laid more emphasis on agriculture than industrialization. The plan led more emphasis on agriculture than industrialization, yes? The plan agreed with Bombay plan on a dominant role of state in economy, dominant role of state in economy, the answer is not correct. Okay, because Gandhian plan never said that there should be a dominant role of the state, okay? State u oka dominant player ga undali anadi ekkada ledu Gandhian plan lo, next. It was formulated by the Gandhian J. Prakash Narayan, this guda tappu? So this also is wrong, it was framed by Sriman Narayan Agarwal. It was found by the Sriman Narayan Agarwal. So which of the following statements are incorrect annadugavatti, answer, answer two and three. Endukante manu the plan laid more emphasis on agriculture, this correct annukunagavatti, answer two and three. Option B is the correct and correct answer, next. Statement one is correct because the Gandhian plane plan laid more emphasis on the agriculture. Agricultural ki ekku priority chinni, industrialization kanna agriculture ki ekku priority chinnigavatti, statement one anadi correct. Statement two, it was in disagreement with the Bombay plan on many issues like centralized planning and dominant role of the state, okay? Endukku anta planning anai concept ni devolu jayali, planning anai concept ni decentralize jayala ni Gandhian concept chuptundi, okay? And dominant role of the state, dominant role of the state, okay? Kuda undadu, there should be the allowance of participation of the private players also. So statement two is incorrect and statement three is also incorrect because the Gandhian plan was drafted by the Sriman Narayan Agarwal. Sriman Narayan Agarwal. Which of the following events took place during the commonly called planned holiday period in India, okay? So manavki ekkaadu years important, chronology importantu, years importantu. First, manaki plan holiday anepuduchini nineteen sixty-six to nineteen sixty-nine, okay? The e three years ni manam plan holidayga konserjaisam, okay? First, the Naxalbari present uprising, okay? Naxalbari issue anadi silguri division, Darjeeling, West Bengal lo una Darjeeling district lo, silguri division lo manaki Naxalbari incident anai, akkada unna zemindar ke againstiga, raithulu teragavattaru, okay? So ala manaki Naxalbari anai incident starteyindi, this manaki nineteen sixty-seven lo jeryindi, okay? Nationalization of Air India, okay? This manaki nineteen fifty-three lo jeryindi, okay? Next, abolition of private persons, abolition of private persons. Private persons ante, manaki independence mundu unna princely states evaite unnaayo, government of India acquisition of princely states evaite unnaayo, a princely stateski sammaninchina rajul gani lekupote, what do you say, nobles gani, valaki ichche allowancesni manu private person tam, okay? This manu nineteen seventy-one lo abolition, okay? Next, declaration of national emergency, this manandarakidelsu, this nineteen seventy-five. Declaration of national emergency on the basis of internal disturbance, this happened in the year nineteen seventy-five. So manaki ekkaadu clear ga ardhavutundi, the answer is the Naxalbari present uprising, endukante this nineteen sixty-seven lo jeryindi. E years lo jeryindiavatti, the answer is A, the Naxalbari present uprising, okay? So the answer is A, the plan holiday occurred during nineteen sixty-six to sixty-nine and the Naxalbari event happened in the year nineteen sixty-seven. Nationalization of the airlines happened in the year nineteen fifty-three, private persons abolished in the nineteen seventy-one and the declaration of national emergency was in the year nineteen seventy-five, clear? Next, consider the following statements regarding India's fire plans, okay? The first fire plan primarily focused on agriculture and price of uh price stability, yes, correct. Mahalobis plan advocated huge imports through foreign loans. This Mahalobis plan anta, manu intamundu discuss jashnatu, second fire plan, this guda correct, next. The second fire plan introduced the industrial policy nineteen fifty-six to achieve the goals of socialistic pattern of society. This guda correct, endukku anta manaki nineteen fifty-six to sixty-one aedaita second fire plan undo, daantlo our fundamental aim was heavy industries. Manu rapid industrialization meeda ekku focus bitam as part of the second fire plan. So ikkadam chuskontham, manaki mood statements correct, second fire plan guda, second statement guda endu correct antunanta, manam aedaita industriyisni promote jethavankunamo, aedaita rapid industrializationni promote jethavankunamo, dani ki manaki investment anadi avasram, andukane manam foreign investmentsni allow jaisam, foreign investments and foreign technology guda allow jaisam, andukane statement two guda correct. So answer is all three, all three, C is the correct answer. The first fire plan was implemented between fifty-one to nineteen fifty-one to fifty-six, okay? So the prime focus was on agriculture, the prime focus was on the agriculture. Second fire plan, also known as the Mahalobis plan, focused on rapid industrialization. Now, indhaak manam matlaadukunattu, rapid industrialization meeda focus jasan gabatti, manaki a time lo anta investment chese shakti ledu, clear? So that is the reason we have borrowed or we have allowed the foreign capital or foreign investments into the India's industrial sector, clear? So statement two is correct and statement three, during the second fire plan, the industrial policy nineteen fifty-six was introduced based on establishment of socialistic pattern of society. This guda correct, endukku anta, indhaak manam matlaadukunattu, manam aedaita rapid industrializationni promote jethavankunamo, dani ke first impetus ichindi nineteen fifty-six industrial policy resolution, industrial policy resolution, clear? Rapid industrialization, next. Which of the following statements is correct about the annual plans during the planning commission era, okay? Twenty point program was launched during, during an annual plan, no. It was not launched during the annual plan, manaki twenty point program anadi, fifth fire plan dhvara tiskocham. Fifth fire plan dhvara tiskocham. Through this twenty point program, we concentrated on the removal of the poverty. We concentrated on the removal of regional disparities, okay? So answer is the twenty, the statement one is wrong, next. Statement two, these were based on the Gad Gill strategy, these well based on the Gad Gill strategy, no. Gad Gill strategy was ba- the fourth fire plan was based on the Gad Gill strategy, okay? Growth with stability, etcetera, was part of the Gad Gill strategy, next. A total of five annual plans were released by the planning commission, this correct statement. Endukku anta manaki nineteen sixty-six to sixty-nine aedaita three years unnaayo, daantlo manan three annual plans tiskocham, okay? Malley nineteen ninety-two ninety-two, okay? Inco two years, annual plans is going. So we have total of five annual plans released by the planning commission, this statement is correct, next. The strategy of annual plans was adopted due to similar reasons every time, no. Manaki ikkada nineteen sixty-two sixty-six to sixty-nine aedaita mood annual plans tiskocham, dani ki main reason, the what do you say, economic instability, economic instability. Manaki around the same time jerygina Indo-China war and also Indo-Pakistan war varvala, we have the greater, what is a, economic loss. So that is the reason because of which we adopted the approach of the annual plan from nineteen sixty-six to sixty-nine. Whereas in nineteen ninety-two ninety-two, one reason is the political reasons and the other reason is the economic crisis that we faced at this point of time. Manaki e time lo facedishna economic crisis valane, manaki LPG reforms vachay. A economic crisis valane, manam rendu annual plans tiskocham, nineteen ninety-two to ninety-two years lo, clear? So this is the thing, twenty point program was launched by the fire plan, okay? And the Gad Gill strategy was based on the fourth fire plan, okay? The growth with stability or what do you say, the progress towards self reliance anai concepts, fourth fire plan dhvara tiskocham manu, next. In total of five annual plans, correct, in total of fire annual plans tiskocham. But any annual planski okay reason gaadu, mikintamundu jepinattu, nineteen sixty-six to sixty-nine manaki economic instability vala vachindi, a economic instability guda, manam war, manam facedishna nineteen sixty-two Indo-China war and nineteen sixty-five India-Pakistan war varvala created an economic instability. Whereas nineteen ninety-two to ninety, nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-two, manaki political reasons guda one of the many important reason. Political reasons vala guda, manam annual plan tiskaravalsachindi. Of course, daantla economic crisis unna guda, still political reason guda one of the very important reason, next. Consider the following statements regarding provisions under the industrial policy resolution nineteen forty-eight. Industrial policy resolution nineteen forty-eight. It provided for mixed economy as the model of Indian economic system, correct, hundred percent? It provided for the creation of district industrial cent- industry center to promote the expansion of small and cottage industries, no. Uh district industrial centers evaite unnaayo, manaki nineteen seventy-seven industrial policy statement dhara tiskocham. So this, this statement anadi wrong, next. It gave permission to the multinational corporations to set up subsidiaries in the country. It gave permission to the multinational corporations, MNCs to set up subsidiaries in the country, okay? Now, ekkaadu statements anta, which of the following are correct? Option two is wrong, okay? Option two is wrong, option one is correct and answer is only one, only one, why? Because third statement guda wrong manaku. Under the industrial policy statement nineteen seventy-three, limited permission for foreign investment was given, okay? The investment that is allowed is limited, it is not that after nineteen ninety, ninety-one tarvata, a limit anadi chala varki manam pinchan, chala varki relax jaisam. But ipudu independence tarvata vachina nineteen forty-eight industrial policy resolution dhara manavu unlimited or what do you say, high proportion of foreign uh en- entry of investments anadi allow jayledu, okay? So statement three is wrong, next. Statement one, industrial policy resolution nineteen forty-eight was the first industrial, industrial policy statement of India, clear? So it was based on the economic system of mixed economy, this correct. And decentralized industrialization was given attention under the industrial policy statement of nineteen seventy-seven, indhaak manam chappukunattu, okay? These statement dhara een jeryindi ante, ekku masses ni leto ekku people ni districts lo unna industrieski link jaitan start jasaru. The people or the masses were linked with the industrial center or the process of the industrial, industrialization, okay? Next, which of the following is are the objectives of the planning? Self reliance, yes, modernization, aduni karannantav, this guda correct. Elimination of poverty, pederika nirmulana, this guda correct. Reduction in the income inequalities, okay? Adai pu asamana tal lepothe, adai pu hichtha gulni tagichadani ki, okay? Reduction in income inequalities, this guda correct, so answer is one, two, three and four. So these are the broad objectives, these are the broad objectives of the Indian planning system. Economic growth, self reliance, removal of unemployment, reduction in income inequalities, elimination of poverty, modernization and inclusiveness and sustainability of growth. These are the broad objectives of the Indian planning system, okay? So this is the discussion on the MCQs that are related to the Indian planning system. As I have said earlier, intamundu ne jepinattuga, e MCQs discussion aedaita undo, adhi APPSC group to mains ko kha- dani ke gaadu, e itara exams kaynagani manaki chala useful and chala important, clear? Thank you.